...be turned off or silenced and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Father, we thank you for a man who impacted a world with love. We thank you for the life of Billy Graham. Too often we protest or preach against a world that doesn't know you. The man who got his call to ministry in Temple Terrace. Billy Graham reached out in love, not judgment. May we as a community show the world, current and prospective residents, businesses, developers, that our community is not one of judgment, but of love for all. Amen. We will now pledge to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And just a quick point of privilege would note that the city is planning a tribute to Dr. Graham and we will be getting word out to citizens. It is currently being coordinated with hopes, we are postponing it a bit with hopes that some of his family members will be able to be in attendance with us. If there are persons who are, who would like to be heard on items not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room and may be turned in to the clerk to your right. And if Julie Bond is with us from the Center for Urban Transit Research, if you would come forward, please, Julie. Just, we waited for you, Julie. We let our other meeting run long for you to get here. March is Bike Month and Bike With the Mayor Day is March 9th and we encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to the stores, to our parks, around our neighborhoods and with friends and family to promote the personal and social benefits achieved from bicycling. And Julie is here this evening to receive this proclamation from the City of Temple Terrace, whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound and effective means of personal transportation, recreation and fitness. And whereas the City of Temple Terrace encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation and whereas the City of Temple Terrace recognizes bicyclist as legitimate roadway users and therefore entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in the City of Temple Terrace. And whereas the City of Temple Terrace encourages the increased use of the bicycle benefiting all citizens of the City of Temple Terrace by improving their air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use and of and dependence upon finite energy resources and fostering exercise. And whereas the City of Temple Terrace recognizes the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for revitalizing the city. Now therefore, I, Mel Herado, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Temple Terrace, Florida hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Bike Month and March 9th, 2018, as Ride With the Mayor Day. In Temple Terrace, we encourage all citizens to ride their bikes again to work, to the store, to parks around their neighborhoods and with friends and family. And Julie, would you like to say a few words?
I'm sure. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to thank the City Council for supporting this again. I believe this is our fifth year and Charles has been very active in putting this together. And I just want to invite all of you out to ride next, this Friday. And Temple Terrace is a great place to ride. I ride almost every day on our streets and so you're doing a good job and I just ask you again to please keep on supporting bicycling. It's a very important mode of transportation for our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, Breton, where did you go? Oh, Breton has t-shirts and flyers, so it's custom for everyone, as you know, to wear a t-shirt, so we all have this great group photo. And so if you come out on Friday, we have bicycle helmets, bike lights, food. I know we're having coffee and donuts.
Yes, from the Rotary Club.
Okay. And so please come out and have some fun on bicycles with us. And Breton, I'll just leave the t-shirts for everyone.
Very good. And the time is 7:30 a.m. at the rec center and we look forward to everyone being with us and thank you so much for being with us this evening. Next, Sean College from Plan Hillsborough will be providing an update to the 2045 population and employment projections and allocation. Sean?
Sean College Planning Commission staff. I don't know how I'm going to follow anything as exciting as biking with the mayor, but...
Are you going to join us, Sean?
I'm going to try now that I know about it for sure, but I'll try to keep this as exciting as it can be. What we're doing, I'm here to update you on a project, an important project that the Planning Commission is doing in conjunction with the MPO and we are working with your staff as well. It's a very important project. We do it about every five years and we want to keep you informed of what we're doing. It is the Hillsborough County 2045 Population and Employment Projections and Allocations. Basically, in a nutshell, what we're doing is we're trying to project what the population of Hillsborough County will be in the future and how that population will grow, where the population will be, where the employment will be for about a 20-plus year horizon. So we're really kind of reaching out with a crystal bar, trying to predict the future of Hillsborough County. So this projection, we do it about every five years. This projection is going to 2045 when we're complete with the project. It is a project that's going to take the better part of this year to complete and we just started in the last few months. So we're just at the very beginning of this project, but we have some highlights we can tell you about. Again, we're looking about 25 years into the future and we want to know where will we grow? Where will the growth in the county take place? How will that growth take place? And what does it mean for our transportation, for our housing, for our infrastructure, for our schools? When the project's complete, we'll have a report that will talk about the current trends we're seeing in the county in terms of what type of development, what type of housing, how many people are living in these housings, where is the housing taking place? We're going to have some demographics that will be associated with the end of the project and when we have that, we'll be sure to share it with you. What we're doing right now, or what we have completed right now is we do have a good handle on what our developable land is. What land, under our current land use plan, is available for development? And also what redevelopable land is available? What land, what might we expect to redevelop in the future? That's an important part of where the population that's coming to the county is going to go. And we are growing at a very rapid pace, so we're going to have to deal with these development pressures. So when we analyze the vacant developable and redevelopable land, what we're seeing right now is that we have about 50,000 acres in Hillsborough County as a whole that is available for development and redevelopment. This slide, what we're showing is our projections. We do it, we have a 2045 population projection and employment projection. It comes from, the population projection comes from the Bureau of Economic and Business Research out of University of Florida and it's only a countywide projection. So part of our job is to allocate that. Where is that going to go within the county? How much is Temple Terrace going to take? How much is the unincorporated area going to take? What we're seeing in this slide is the existing population of the county and build-out population. By build-out, we mean when we build out of that 50,000 acres that's available under our current land use plan, that's not changing our land use plan, that's under our current land use plan. And the yellow, excuse me, the red dotted line are the, what we call the control totals or these are what is expected for growth in employment and population through 2045. So what this is showing is that we actually don't have enough land available under our current land use plan to accommodate all the growth through 2045 if we build at the same densities that we're building now. Because we're generally, countywide, we're not generally building out at the highest densities that are allowed under our plans. That's not the product that, you were talking about products earlier tonight, that the development community is building. They generally don't see the highest, the highest density product as being viable. This slide is showing you totals by jurisdiction in the bar form and you can see in Temple Terrace, the growth that we're expecting through build-outs. Actually, the next slide will be a better way of looking at the same data, so let me go on to that. This will be in table form of the same data. So showing your existing population and this is, these are early numbers, like I said, we're just starting this project, but it gives you an idea of what we're seeing. And then this is at build-out. So we're seeing population increase for Temple Terrace that build out of about 3,300 more people. This is just an estimate, don't get married to exact numbers, but it gives you an idea of what we're seeing. Maybe a 13% increase in population, maybe a 26% increase in employment for Temple Terrace that build out. Build-out, we're expecting that right now to be somewhere around 2035, 2036. That's when we're thinking that it looks like we will probably utilize that 50,000 acres countywide. Now, how will the market respond? As we approach that build-out, if we don't do anything different, what's going to happen? Well, there's going to be pressure for available land because people still want to live here. This is a great place to come, work and live. So there's going to be pressure for the unincorporated in county to expand their urban service area. People are going to say, hey, we need more places to build, we need to accommodate this, so why don't you expand the urban service boundary? I don't know if we want to do that or not, but it's definitely going to be pressure for that. There's going to be more redevelopment pressure, maybe more lands will be viable for redevelopment because as land becomes more scarce, it becomes more profitable and more expensive to build and more profitable to build. And there'll also be probably more infill and intensification as land becomes more scarce, assuming we don't do anything different. We could do something different and that's part of this process is what will the county look if we keep doing what we're doing now? And what will the county look like if we do things differently? If we change our land use plan? If we do things differently to accommodate this growth? So, and what we're going to do is we're going to develop different scenarios that we'll be sharing with you later in this project of what we could do countywide to deal with these great, these important growth pressures that we're seeing. And with that, I'll ask the Executive Director of the MPO, Beth Alden, to come up and she can tell you a little bit about what we're doing with the scenario development.
Thanks so much. The scenario planning process is a way of looking at uncertainties and looking at them holistically so that we're exploring both the land use and growth implications and the transportation planning and priority setting implications. And so that's why I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the transportation end of things that the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation is involved with. And so I'll just hit some of these highlights, see if I've got the right button. So scenario planning, generically, is looking at where are we going based on our current trends? Sean told you a little bit about the development trends. We're of course looking at where are we in transportation in terms of our traffic growth, in terms of our transit ridership, in terms of access to choices. So trends extending out to the future, but what if we changed our policies? Would we wind up with different alternative futures? And I know a number of you were involved with our scenario planning project that we did four years ago now, I think, which was the Imagine 2040 Scenario Planning Project, which we did countywide and again looked at three different options. What if we do kind of continued sprawl out across the county? What if we focus on rail corridors and do not expand our urban services area at all? Or what if we focus our development on our major interstate highway corridors and maybe create some new corporate centers along those corridors? So those were three very different alternative futures for our community. Got a lot of public feedback about that. Out of that, created a hybrid scenario that had components of all of those and City of Temple Terrace, City of Tampa, Plant City have all adopted the hybrid scenario as an essential part of your comprehensive plan. And so what we're going to be doing now is looking at, do we still have some uncertainties that we need to address, like adequate land to address growth? And of course, the interesting thing from my perspective, what the heck do we do about transportation? Because we still don't seem to have a way forward on that. So, on the bright side, we do have a number of ideas that are tied into some ongoing initiatives by our major transportation agencies. So, some different options. We might look at how our trend could be affected by technology such as automated vehicle and connected vehicle technology. Could this increase the capacity of our roadways? Conversely, could it increase demand by having, you know, more rideshare vehicles out there circulating or allowing people to make trips that they're not making today because they don't have access to a vehicle or they have a visual impairment, for example? Anyway, so trend amplified by technology, where are we going to be from a transportation perspective? We've also, we'd also like to explore, how far could we get with transit in terms of accommodating development? And what could that mean if we really did make a serious investment in a rapid transit system? What would it mean for revitalization and redevelopment in our communities, particularly our urban core? So that's one scenario to explore. And then a third scenario is one that we have talked about with some of the folks who have been concerned about the Tampa Bay Express project, where they asked us to look at, what if we take I-275 north of downtown Tampa? What if that did not happen after all? It was originally created as a swath through our urban neighborhoods. What if it became a boulevard? And what if a large beltway were created around the urban area to accommodate the traffic that needs to move around? So we've committed to them that we would explore this option and bring it out with all of the facts for consideration by everyone. So this is one of the options that we'll be exploring as well. So the pieces that are feeding into this, one of those is the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan that we also have on your agenda. And I've actually asked the consultant, Scott Pringle, he'll be up in just a minute as soon as I get through a few more slides, to talk a little bit about what the recommendation is out of the technical analysis for where do we start investing in a transit system in this region? And we are also coordinating closely with the Tampa Bay Next process of the Florida Department of Transportation, which has looked at express toll lanes on I-275, is now exploring some other options as well, including express toll lanes on I-75, which has been a high priority for our region as a, I-75 is a major economic spine for our region. And so that has been a high priority for us, as well as looking at I-4. So, again, uncertainties here, where is that regional spine going to land in terms of transportation? And just recently, the Hillsborough County Commission brought the Urban Land Institute to come and look at the potential of the I-4 corridor for growth and development. I believe Temple Terrace has been involved in that conversation as well. And that area, particularly around the I-4, I-75 interchange, tremendous potential as, you know, being very close to the center of our region. So, all of these decisions that you and others will be making in Hillsborough County have ramifications for the region as a whole. And so what we're doing that's going to be a little bit different than the scenarios that you saw last time is we're actually doing the, in conjunction with the Pasco MPO and the Pinellas MPO, so that we're going to have tri-county scenarios, looking at what do the choices that all of us make mean for all of us as a region? Briefly, what are we going to be learning from the scenario planning process? Will be able to look at how much growth can we accommodate in these different scenarios? Will transit work? Who has access to it? How many people have access to it, to different types of transit? Are walking and cycling viable? How many people have access to those facilities? Are commutes getting longer or shorter? We'll look at not only distance, but travel time. How much will it cost? Some of these scenarios are going to have not only build cost, but maintenance and operations costs that are different from each other. We'll look at where does the growth land with respect to storm surge areas as we continue to try to increase our resiliency? And what does it all mean for the good stuff, the stuff that we all want to have? Natural resources, rural lands, parks, making sure that we have that quality of life for future generations? So our schedule for this project, we are in the throes of drafting those scenarios right now, crunching the numbers. So in the next couple of months, we'll be able to actually attach some performance metrics to the pictures. And then we'll begin a public outreach process over the summer, asking people to weigh in on what they like and what they're maybe not so fond of in some of these scenarios so that we can then come back and look at a hybrid again. And I think that wraps up this presentation. Any questions on the growth forecast presentation?
I do.
So how can we participate in what you're doing now?
Ah, great question. So we are working with your staff about the growth projections and redevelopment potential. And what happens next is that we're going to be looking for venues to talk with members of the public. So civic groups, getting information tables out at public events. And we're going to be bringing the questionnaire about these scenarios out to the people. So we very much want your help and partnership in bringing this out as widely as possible over the summer.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And are you going to roll right into the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan?
I am, if that is the council's pleasure. And so if we could queue up the next presentation, again, I'm going to ask Scott Pringle, who's the project manager with Jacobs Engineering, to come and tell you a little bit more about the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan that I mentioned just a moment ago. It is a plan that is very much a collaborative effort. The project was funded by the Florida Department of Transportation. It's been administered by heart. The Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation Authority is actively working now on what steps can they take to try to move it to the next level? And all of the MPOs are involved in bringing information out and helping folks provide feedback since we are at a draft phase of the plan. So I will turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everyone. Scott Pringle with Jacobs Engineering. I am the project manager from the consultant side for the Regional Transit Feasibility Plan. I think Beth did a great job of introducing the project. It is a two-year process and in the first year, our goal was to look at the data and identify some concepts, which I'm going to talk about here this evening. But we're in that second phase, which is going to continue from today all the way through the September, October timeframe. And that second phase is only to vet and have a community dialogue around those draft concepts, take the input that we receive through the next several months and use that to help make a better project, make a better final draft concept, which we'll have at the end of the year. So the planned purpose is to look at premium transit for the Tampa Bay region, really looking at an opportunity to identify some mobility options where we can look for some new choices to move people around Tampa Bay. The plan itself was essentially defined as first, let's figure out what the vision is for the Tampa Bay region. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that. But more so than just the vision was really taking that next step and, you know, identifying that vision, but also identifying, you know, how do we get started? What is that first project that we can really use and get implemented to sort of get the ball rolling so that we can eventually, you know, work towards building out that ultimate vision? And that first project, we're sort of affectionately calling it the catalyst project, really is going to be the project that gives us today in 2017, 2018, the best opportunity to attract federal and state grant dollars to help us get that project up and running and constructed. So as I mentioned, that vision was one of the first milestones that the project undertook. You can see the map here to the left. Beth showed it in her presentation. It actually includes 21 different premium transit projects in that vision and it really has a wide-ranging impact when you look at just the jobs and people that would be served within a half mile of this network, all those blue lines on the map. You can see six out of 10 jobs and five out of 10 residents by 2040. So once we understood the vision, again, like I mentioned up front, the next step is, okay, well, how do we get the ball rolling? What is that first project? And keep in mind that that first project is not to replace any of these other needs that's in the vision, but really, like I said before, what can we do today, what's feasible today, to get the ball rolling on the rest of the vision? So to do that, we started peeling away the onion, you know, the layers of the onion on that vision plan, looking at what's competitive, looking at not only the corridors that are competitive, but what actually would operate on those corridors. So we looked at a lot of different modes. We even looked at passenger ferry, like for example, across the bay. We looked at a number of different rail technologies as well as what we call rubber tire technologies, which includes bus rapid transit, express bus and some of those future technologies that Beth was mentioning as far, you know, which could be driverless vehicles. So our focus at the end of 2017 really boiled down to two corridors and these five alternatives. Really focusing on I-275 connecting all the way from Wesley Chapel through Tampa, West Shore into downtown St. Pete, looking at two different modes, both a rubber tire and a rail mode on that corridor. And the second corridor is looking at CSX connecting USF area, Temple Terrace area, down to downtown Tampa and again, looking at rubber tire and a couple of different rail modes. The evaluation criteria and essentially the entire technical process was really guided by that federal grant program. So they have guidelines of what they're hoping to see from a project. We really use that as sort of our benchmark to identify what is going to be a high-performing project. Looking at those five alternatives, we started putting cost to those alternatives and what we recognized immediately is that we've got very high project costs. And it was actually going to put us in a position of not being competitive for those federal and state grant dollars. And a lot of that has to do is the way we're sort of designing those concepts. So we took a step back and started looking at those two corridors and really we wanted to maximize the existing assets that are out there today in order to benefit transit and really make those projects as competitive possible. So when you look at the 275 corridor, that asset, I think all, everyone's aware of, is the, is the highway, is the interstate. So what can we do with the interstate to really benefit transit? And on the CSX corridor, it's an active freight corridor. What can we do with that to sort of reduce cost on that CSX corridor? So I'm going to show you two concepts. The first concept is again, that I-275 corridor. And what we're actually looking at is in portions of the corridor, widening the shoulder. A good example is taking the shoulder, making it approximately 15 foot wide. You know, this may not be the case in every aspect of the corridor, but generally speaking, widen the shoulder to 15 feet. Can we take 10 feet of that new widened shoulder and dedicate that for transit? And by doing that, we're able to sort of piggyback on a lot of roadway improvements the Department of Transportation is looking at. And it really brings down our cost. And what it really does is help us focus on investments where the need is and save some investment on capital, for example, going across the Howard Franklin Bridge. To put a new bridge in specifically for transit is a very expensive proposition. So we looked at opportunities to sort of leverage those existing assets. The department is looking at replacing the northbound span of the Howard Franklin Bridge, which includes express toll lanes. And in those express toll lanes, they're designed or will hopefully be managed to maintain at least a minimum of 45 miles per hour across those toll lanes. So we have the opportunity to have the transit project use those lanes and really what that does from the transit perspective is all we have to worry about is the driver, the gas and the purchase of the vehicle and not have to worry about that infrastructure. So we're looking at dedicated lanes, using that, you know, carving out a piece of that shoulder from St. Pete to Gateway, jumping into those toll lanes across the Howard Franklin Bridge. And then from West Shore through downtown Tampa and all the way up to Beers, looking at those dedicated lanes, again, carving out a section of the shoulder. That also helps us not only on the structural side, but we can partner with FDOT and it really reduces our right-of-way needs except for at those stations. We do have 21 stations recommended at this draft stage. 19 of them would be at grade. So we recognize the importance of having stations where stations should be, which is in a neighborhood, it's in a community, so it can be a focal point for that community to provide access. So when we meet at street level, that means that that service would actually get off the interstate, make that connection to a station and then come back onto the interstate and continue on its travel. We do have some rough travel times, end to end, talking about 80 to 95 minutes, but that's if you stop at every single stop. And what we're going to look at is certainly different patterns of service within the corridor. For example, we can definitely have something that connects Wesley Chapel and makes a quick stop at the Fowler at USF area and then continues on to downtown Tampa and that dramatically reduces our travel time, where you could almost make that trip in about 25 minutes, which is very competitive of what you're seeing during congestion during peak hour for the automobile. peak hour for the automobile. So by doing that, we're actually able to reduce those project costs. You know, we were looking at $2.9 billion with a fully median dedicated rubber tire transit in the interstate, which meant new infrastructure, new overpasses, new bridges, carving out that space out of the shoulder for a dedicated lane. We dropped our prices significantly down to $1.6 billion. But we also have this sort of rare and unique opportunity to actually use roadway dollars, federal highway dollars, and those, all those plans that the department is looking at to modernize the interstate for the benefit of transit. And if we partner with FDOT to do that, we can actually even see further cost savings in dropping the overall project price down to $455 million for total construction. Now, again, we took the same approach to the CSX corridor, the active freight line. So we looked at a rail vehicle that can use the active freight line and still meet safety requirements from the federal government. It's called an electric or a diesel multiple-unit rail vehicle. And by doing that, refurbishing the track that's out there today to make it ready for passenger travel, we're actually able to, again, reduce project costs, which we're in the $1 billion mark on the high side for that nine-mile corridor, and drop it down to $620 million for the total project costs. And after that exercise and looking at making those projects competitive, we sort of did a side-by-side comparison. We feel that both projects have great merit, and they both will be competitive for those federal and state grant dollars, based on some of the information or the evaluations that we've done to date. We've been able to reduce those project costs, especially that cost per trip, which is now well in line with what the federal government is looking for. But some of the things that we need to sort of think about moving forward is we can partner with the department today. We don't have to worry about, you know, new agreements for using right-of-way. For the CSX corridor, we need to have that conversation with CSX to either lease or purchase the property to operate the service. And the time to construct both projects, you can see it here, it's about five years for the I-275 corridor with that partnership with the department, and 10 years on the CSX corridor. So they tend to almost sequence themselves in that regard. And some additional stats, the 275 corridor is 41 miles long, connects three counties. Annual operations, here's a, it's another important point or distinction between the two projects. You know, on that 41-mile segment, we're looking at about $7 million annually to operate that service, where the CSX corridor is more expensive to operate on an annual basis at about $12 million annually for that nine-mile corridor. So we're identifying the I-275 corridor as that catalyst project for all those reasons that I just mentioned. But I just want people to understand that the, sort of the vision or the concept that we're talking about here. It is a rubber tire service, a rubber tire project or a concept, but there are a number of elements to this that really go well beyond what I think Tampa Bay's come grown accustomed to when they're looking at, for example, local buses. You know, we're absolutely looking at dedicated lanes so that we can bypass those heavily congested portions of the corridor by carving out a space of the shoulder. The vehicles themselves, they don't look like your traditional local buses. They look more like trains. They just happen to be on rubber tires. They have all the amenities and speed of a, of a train vehicle. And the stations themselves, you know, we're actually looking at over, you know, approximately about 44% of the total project costs being invested in stations, because we know that that's the connection to the neighborhoods, to the communities, and that's really where the economic development will occur, so we want to make sure that we invest in those stations. So I talked about the stations. And again, you know, opportunity for modifying this project and evolving it as new technologies come online, we definitely have that opportunity within the I-275 corridor. So in conclusion, I talked at the front about our schedule, but we are looking at taking this draft concept out to the public. We've already heard a lot of input and received a lot of input on the draft concepts. We're, we've been listening, and we're making modifications to that draft plan. And we're going to continue to do so all the way through the summer into the fall timeframe, in which we wrap up the plan and finalize those concepts. So Mayor, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pringle. And I'd ask Council, Councilman Fugor.
Well, certainly, thank you for looking into this. I think there's nobody out here that would disagree that we need to do something. However, after listening to this, it sounds like deja vu all over again. There's been a number of studies since I've been sitting up here that all kind of almost mirror what you just told us about expanding lanes and no right-of-way. How is yours different? And have you thought about the pushback you're going to get, especially in the Ebor City area, when you start expanding lanes? And then I guess lastly, other than federal and, and state grants, how are you going to pay for it all?
So within the 275 corridor, we would operate within the existing right-of-way. There'd be no expansion of the interstate corridor itself. The width of the interstate would be as it is today. The benefit there is that we're able to widen those shoulders within that right-of-way and carve out a piece of that. That's very different than any other proposal that's come before. And, you know, in a lot of ways, it actually puts Tampa Bay, if that project goes forward, in a position of sort of being an innovator in that regard. And what that does for us is not only reduces any right-of-way needs or expansion of the interstate, but we also get to piggyback on all, all the overpasses that are already built there for the automobile that we would not have to build for transit, and that's where we get some of those cost savings. Now, in Ebor, that connection, I think you're referring to the CSX corridor, which would serve Ebor. Again, we're looking at the existing CSX right-of-way as it stands today, potentially, you know, either purchasing that or leasing that, so there wouldn't be any expansion of the right-of-way there, but providing that rail-servedness service that would connect downtown Tampa and all the connections all the way up to USF. And then in the USF area, you know, specifically Temple Terrace, we're looking and working with the department. They're doing an intermodal study right now that's going to look for where is a good place to have an intermodal center in the USF area. So we're going to coordinate with that, so that station location will still sort of be part of the dialogue as we move forward. And we absolutely want to connect in to all the plans that the Innovation District is looking at as far as circulators up and down Fowler, to make sure we get good connectivity to the USF area.
And what about cost?
The cost? So when we look at the cost that I presented, the sort of traditional model for getting those projects built is you would hope that you'd get 50% of the project, the capital costs, built or paid for by that federal grant dollar. And the state has a matching program where they'll match dollar-for-dollar the local investment of the remaining 50. So it effectively becomes a 25% match from the state grant program, and then 25% of the cost would be at the local level. And, you know, to some degree, I think cost will still be a big part of the conversation as we go through this year. Funding, you know, coming up with that local match, as, as you mentioned, has been the primary reason why projects have not moved forward, to be perfectly honest. So we need to have that dialogue and identifying what, how we can pay for that local share. But with that catalyst project, you know, we are looking at a, a, a much smaller cost, and we're also looking at sharing that cost across three counties and not necessarily putting all the ownership on one county or one jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions for either Ms. Alden or Mr. Pringle? Thank you very much for being with us this evening. Moving on, there is a vacancy for an alternate member on the Riverwatch Task Force. The city received one application from Pamela Epps. Ms. Epps, would you like to address the council, if Ms. Epps is here tonight?
I can. I just, I just wanted to, an opportunity to serve the Temple Terrace, because I've lived here a long time, and I feel, you know, I want to start to give back. And I also, we also recently moved to the river, so I have some, you know, awareness of what's going on there, and I wanted to just be more part of it. But, you know, if there's other people, it doesn't look like there are, but.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Pamela Epps as an alternate member of the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending from March 6, 2018 until March 6, 2021.
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Epps, and thank you for your willingness to serve our community. If the minutes of February 20, 2018, city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
Still moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, sign. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda? There is a three-minute time limit that will be imposed on all comments from the public. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative spokesperson to speak on their behalf and thereby relinquish their time to that spokesperson. The representative spokesperson shall be allowed to speak for one minute for each such designation, up to a maximum of 10 minutes. And first to speak, Holly Boggs.
My name's Holly Boggs. I live at 11726 Primrose Lane, Temple Terrace, 33637. I also put in, I only gave, put four folders out there. They have eight-by-10 glossies of situation. I just came tonight to make and get recorded that I have concerns about some construction that's happening down at the end of my street. They're putting in 10 houses in our little enclave, and so I'm just going to start with a brief history. The house that I live in has been there for 42 years. I've been living there for 22 years, and my parents owned it before me, and never, ever in the history of living there, or the house being there, has there been a water problem of any kind, standing or flooding or anything like that. About five years ago, well, before 2008, somebody brought up that property and was going to develop it, kind of ended when the recession hit. But about five years ago, we heard that they were going to come back and start the construction. We had a neighborhood meeting at my house. Actually, Mr. Stevenson came, as he wasn't in the same position then, and an engineer from the company. And a lot of the neighbors came with questions about concerns they had. Mine was always, how is this going to affect my property? Because my property abuts that property. And they, you know, they told us at the time, don't worry about it. Everything's going to be taken care of. We'll have swales to drain the water. I thought, because they had to build it so high, the water would come off onto my property. Then, last year, just before the hurricane, they put a silt screen up. That's where they put the permeable screen up around the property. Then Hurricane Irma came, and the next day I went out and found out I had water standing all along my fence line along this silt screen. And the pictures, even though it doesn't show the silt screen, it, you know, it shows the water standing, and that water was there for three days. Then I called Pierre, who is a city engineer at the time. I don't know his last name, but anyway, it was Pierre. I brought him out and, you know, expressed my concerns. He said, don't worry, you know, new construction cannot negatively affect property that's already there. They'll put swales in, this and that, this and that. And so if you, you know, you can look at the pictures, the fourth picture shows actually where the water was standing. And, and you can also see that thing running along the property line there. Looks something like a block fence, which it is. Since then, they have put up a, about a two, two-foot block fence with about a one-and-a-half foot footer of cement underneath it, which is basically they had built a dam next to my property. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I want to get it on record, since last week, I have met with Mr. Stevenson. We had a very good conversation yesterday, and I feel good about it, but I just wanted to get it on record that I do have this problem, and I still feel like it's going to negatively affect my property.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Next, Mr. Noonan.
I'm John Noonan, 305 South Glen Arvin Avenue here in Temple Terrace. I'm here to continue my complaint of last meeting, partly because I got such nice responses. Councilwoman Donahue asked a question. The public information officer gave a response. The marketing and communications director sent me a couple of emails. And I think I can make one recommendation, which you'd probably agree to. When you refer to a financial document in your minutes, refer to the name of the document, not just call it information about, which might mean almost anything. That means giving it the name that it will have in the archive. And I think you should also provide the link to the archive. And thirdly, if the document is a short one, as this one was, I think it should be attached to the minutes. So I think I understand a little bit better what was going on, and the city clerk has helped me also. But I don't think you still accept responsibility for asking as many financial questions as you should. I mean, I went back and looked at the last available audit, and you all were clearly told that the golf course was three out of four quarterly payments missing back in June of 2017. That didn't have to become a crisis in December of 2017. At the same time, the auditors told you that you should, as soon as possible, refinance the $24 million loan, and you've let that slide. LIBOR rates, London Interbank offered rate, is twice what it was in February of last year. So you're going to pay more for borrowing money than you would have if you had acted with some alacrity. I think even earlier than the audit, it was recommended that you not keep borrowing from reserves to pay for ongoing operations. And as far as I can tell, in the last budget, you borrowed nearly $900,000 from reserves. In fact, your debt service account is in debt by a quarter of a million dollars. So I don't think you're really staying on the back of the city manager as much as you should about these financial questions. And I think this is going to be more important in the future as money starts pouring in. I heard about 10 or 12 million dollars' worth of deals that might be consummated within the next six to nine months. Are you going to be sure that that money is being used to pay down debt or invested to increase revenue? What is going to happen to that money? I think you've got to ask constantly and very publicly about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Are there others wishing to address council with regards to items not on the agenda this evening? Thank you. And I would share with both Ms. Boggs and Mr. Noonan, I'd like to note that during public comment on items that are not on the agenda, our city manager and our directors in attendance do make notes of those items. And during the city manager's report later in the agenda, Mr. Stevenson may comment, or where there is further research needed, he may direct or assign a staff member, but both of you will be followed up with on these items, and thank you very much. Moving on, a resolution extending the maturity date of the city's development note with PNC Bank. Jay Glover, managing director with Public Financial Management, will explain. Mr. Glover?
Mayor, council members, Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors LLC, the city's financial advisor. We spoke with you all, maybe a couple of meetings ago, last meeting, about the pending maturity on April 1 of 2018 of the redevelopment note. At that point, we were tasked with going out with an RFP to solicit proposals to see what opportunities might be available for refinancing. We've done that. We actually did get a few proposals on Friday of this past week. We're reviewing those with your staff and plan to come back on March 20 with more information related to that. In the meantime, PNC has agreed to extend the redevelopment note from April 1, 2018 to June 1 of 2018 under the same terms. So that loan currently pays a fixed rate of 2.33%. So it will be extended for two months under that same term. And within that two-month period, you will be able to prepay it at any time without a penalty. So to the extent we're ready to move forward, mid-April, late April, you know, mid-May, we can actually prepay that loan at any time in those two months. So the plan, again, is to discuss the various proposals with your staff in more detail, present that to you all on March 20, and then hopefully move forward quickly to put a permanent solution in place. But PNC has been very generous and willing to extend their proposal to give us time to analyze ulterior alternatives, and obviously, the proposal they presented as well is being considered. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. And prior to that, I'd ask, are there members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue? I'd ask council members, are there any comments or questions, Mr. Glover? Then if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Then if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the resolution amending Resolution 131-15 to extend the maturity date of the city's taxation non-ad valorem refunding revenue note from April 1, 2018 to June 1, 2018.
Move to approve the resolution amending Resolution 131-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll open the public hearing and second reading of an ordinance permitting the city manager to reside outside the city limits. City Attorney Pam Shishon will give a brief explanation.
The topic was initially discussed two meetings ago when the, I believe it was two meetings ago, when the city manager's new contract was approved. This was accepted at the time by the majority of council members. We had the first reading of this ordinance last meeting. And such ordinance was necessary because there had previously been, or there still is, a requirement that the city manager reside within the city limits. However, given the certain factors that are listed within the ordinance, the council had determined that they were going to permit the city, this city manager to reside outside the city limits. And so this is the second reading of that ordinance.
Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask council, is there any discussion? If not, would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1448 permitting the city manager to reside outside the city limits.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with the aye sign.
Aye.
Oh, apologize. If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance, 1448. It's just we all did our homework and read it.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, permitting the city manager to reside outside the city limits for the duration of the present city manager contract, providing for conflicts and an effective date.
Thank you. I will, I will now once again ask for that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Thank you, Councilwoman Pagorlik. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we'll open the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1447 for the voluntary annexation of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue. Community Development Director Amir Anisi will give a brief review.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. We have second public hearing and reading for annexation 1801. Hopefully, the slide will come up. This is a voluntary annexation, annexation 1801. The property address is 7134, 7142 East Fowler Ave. Again, this is second public hearing and reading. The owner applicant is Ramshaw Gas Station LLC. Applicant agent is Vertical Construction and Management. The background information, the location, as I stated, 7134, 7142 East Fowler Ave. Their request is annexation of two parcels into the City of Temple Terrace. The acres is 1.45. The existing use is a vacant land on the west parcel and the gas station on the east parcel. Existing zoning is County CN Commercial Neighborhood. The proposed zoning will be City of Temple Terrace Commercial General. The staff recommend council approve ordinance 1447 for annexation of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Ave.
Thank you. Are there members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from council? If the clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1447.
An ordinance annexing by voluntary petition two parcels of real property totaling approximately 1.45 acres located at the northwest corner of East Fowler Avenue and the River Hills Drive, 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue, legally described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part thereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing for severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance 1447 for the voluntary annexation of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue.
Move to approve ordinance 1447 after second public hearing, second, second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favors, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you very much. Next, the second public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP number 17-15. Paradigm Sports Corporation will now open this public hearing with Community Development Director Amir Anisi giving a brief review.
Again, good evening. This is the second public hearing for RZP 1715 rezoning. The applicant is Paradigm Sport Corporation. Applicant is Mesa Consultant. The background location information is 5309, 5311, 5313 East Bush Boulevard, 8537, 8539 Overlook Drive. The current zoning is CG and also R10. To be, again, changed to planned development with conceptual plan. The acre is 3.67. This is the conceptual plan. This project will be in different phases. The existing building is in Phase One. The proposed self-ass storage on Overlook Drive will, will be in Phase Two. And then the new retail on the front will be on Phase Three. And of course, we have emergency access in the rear part of the property, as we discussed about it on last time. This is, will be exclusively for fire rescue. They will have a gate on it with a Knox box, so, and the main access will be for the development on the Bush Boulevard site. The existing building is one-story bowling alley, a skating rink. The proposed will be self-ass storage. And again, they break it down in different phases and different square foot. And the office portion of it will be 2,617. Part of the existing building, the new retail, will be on the Phase Three portion, which is 6,500 square foot. This is the elevation of the building, north elevation, south elevation is the proposed elevations. And they have a height on it. Part, part of the building will be single-story, part of, part of it will be two-story. And this is a west and east elevation. Condition of approval is six. Again, approved use and phases. And then the second will be the site development standards. The third would be coordination for infrastructure improvement. The fourth, and again, this is going back, looking at the minutes and the comment we had from Councilmember Chilora about the buffer wall in the rear. We have existing wall. That wall will stay in place in case if they have to replace it again for any cause throughout the construction. That will be, again, build it back up to provide buffer from the rear property to the residential. And condition number five, again, is that cross access, again, that was common from Councilman Chilora, to the building on the west. And again, we encourage the developer to have that cross access and work with the property on the west to have that access for pedestrian and also for traffic. And condition number six is hours of operation. And the hours will be from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And this is per our code section, land development, if I find the right number, is per section of the 16710, which is a land development code. And the applicant requests seven waivers. The waiver number one will be applied to the two buildings in rear. And again, this is one of the comment from Councilman Ross. He didn't support the Phase Three part of the waivers. So Phase Three, which is the retail, has to comply. And again, clearly, I state that in the condition with our section of 12, 290 Architectural Style Guideline. The waiver number two is a window transparency. Third one would be line to, built to line. Fourth one will be window transparency. Fifth one, again, is a loading area typically in the CRA and also over Lake District. We don't allow loading and loading in the front of the building. We had to, again, make exception and part of the waivers, they're allowed to do loading and loading on the front of the buildings. However, the Phase Three, again, have to comply with this section of the code. They have to do loading and loading on the rear part of the buildings. And again, driveway access typically on over Lake District is 30. We have existing 36, which is beneficial. It's better to have wider access for emergency and fire rescues. And the parking, again, they ask for more parking than the required is. And last, not but the least, under the condition of the approval, we add a column on the Exhibit C to, to Mr. Pagorlich's comment for timeline, estimated timeline for the construction. He had a question, how long this project is gonna take. So again, we reach out to the applicant. We ask him to provide us tentative schedule for construction. So we added a column to the right of table on Exhibit C that clearly state the phase of the construction and, you know, the timeline for the construction. And the last one, recommendation, of course, we work very closely with the planning commission. Planning commission found request consistent with the comprehensive plan. The staff recommend council approve ordinance 1446 to adopt rezoning with the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi, and thank you, Mr. Charles, for your very thorough and comprehensive addressing of council's concerns. I would ask if there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask if there are any comments from you. Oh. You have one?
Sorry for the look. I just got off of work. Too many sinks and too many water heaters today. Jeff Meyer, 8727 Overlook Drive, 8713 Overlook Drive, former crime watch person and just longtime lifer of Temple Terrace. Won't put it that way. Been here since life. That's interesting. We have problems with this area in our neighborhood. Got up here before, and we've had problems with other things. I finally got something written down. I had somebody help me write it down, and I have about three minutes, and it takes a little less, a little more than three minutes. City of Temple Terrace's forefathers have basically laid out the rules and patterns of what we're supposed to be doing in the city. Sometimes we follow them, sometimes we don't. But this little project has a little bit of a twist to it. It has a real big twist to it to, to where it can become a monster to the city. And in that monster, each and every one of us have a right to understand that it could come back and haunt and hurt us in several, several different ways. These ways are based upon what we see and do in our neighborhood. A lot of times, y'all don't see what our neighborhood goes through, and you don't see any of us complain, but we sit and fight. Last week, we had us people move out on us and dump all their stuff in the middle of the street. And I give thumbs up to Tom here. He jumped on it like anything and got it out, and we don't have to look at it. But it fringed the benefits of Tampa because they were throwing all their junk in Tampa and the rest of the junk in Temple Terrace. Some of that also brought a very ugly word because it stunk, and it really kinda concerned us because it became hazardous. That's the issue here with us on the other end of the bowling alley. We're now allowing a ordinance to be brought to us and stuck into this place, which I can't yet find, while having a storage unit that is being built on a site that we know, having ordinances, doesn't exist or doesn't have the right to be there under what the city has given us. Now, y'all have a right to be able to say, okay, it's good, go ahead and do it. But looking at our end of the view, we look at the back end of that. We don't know what's going inside of those units. We don't know what they're going to put there. They can say they want something there, but it's, to us, you look at it, basically, a can of trash. No matter what you think, I don't think they're gonna put gold. I don't think they're gonna put silver in it. I don't think they're gonna put valuables that don't decay. They're gonna put chemicals in them. Go right down here to the public works and go walk through one of those. Look at it. Look what they leave. Place was about, well, it's up the road here on 56th Street. That's correct. I wanna make sure it's right. He opened up to one of the trailers, or one of the units that they had there, and it was filled with tires. Tires, a toxic waste. You know why he did it? He rented it under a false name. He came back in and filled it with tires. You all had to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to have all those tires done. Now, I don't want that in my city, and I definitely don't want it next to my property. But we now also have to worry about the leakage of that. But that's a different story. But to convince you that it can go bad, and it can do wrong, think about before you get to rezoning something without having safe feels about it. It concerns us, seriously concerns us. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good, good evening. My name is Gare Axon. I live at 8721 Overlook Drive. I moved here in May of 2014 from Wisconsin. I am a member of the Friendship Club, a member of the Garden Club, a member of the Country Club, and also chairman of the spring market that took place this last Saturday. My question to the new owner of this property where the bowling alley is, what kind of businesses are going into the office building? And what kind of restaurant will they be? Is there gonna be a fast food? Or a nice restaurant that you can sit down, enjoy dinner peacefully? Or what kind of retail store? Because we really don't have any good retail stores here in Temple Terrace. And what are they gonna sell? Because we got a lot of other things in Temple Terrace that I'm not interested in. He should know that by now. When it comes to the storage units, how many? How many does he gonna put up? And what times will they be open? And is there gonna be a lock gate? I'm in favor of building up Temple Terrace. I'm a, a resident here. I love my home and my property. But I'm in, I'm not in favor of those storage units. They aren't gonna be used, not very good. And it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be tip up. I don't know what's going in those storage units. I don't know how many. So if I'm, if I'm not in favor of it, and you are, but I would be careful in what you do into this city. do into this city. Think hard about that. Because one mistake can cost all of us. And when Frank mentioned last month, people wanna move because there's nothing here. I'm tempted to do that. I have a home that I took over from my mom and dad that died. And I took over that home. I redid it. I have three lots and I'd be willing to sell it if things ain't not gonna change. Because I can't even get out on Overlook, um, to Bush Boulevard from Overlook because the trap is so bad. And then you're gonna build all this. That's gonna be worse. There's gonna be no way of out. So I would definitely consider what he does. And I do really know, wanna know how many units there gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Would Mr. Anisi or the petitioner like to address?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. To address the public comment, the proposed, again, under the conceptual site plan is a six hundred forty-five unit. Okay? The hours of operation, as I explained, is from seven AM to ten PM. And again, as far as the retail, we know is a sixty-five hundred on phase three, but we don't know the detail because this is a conceptual, you know, plan. We don't have the final site plan or final proposed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Ty Maxi with Mazer Consulting, representing the applicant. Just to address some of the questions, some of the concerns and questions, of course, there's no, absolutely no access on Overlook Drive. The access is through the existing driveway on Bush Boulevard. The site is contained internal to the property. All of the activity is internal to the property, eliminating any type of activity around the fringe or, you know, certainly along Overlook Drive. We've created a buffer from Overlook Drive, but the loading activity is internal to the site, you know, far from Overlook Drive. The only access, as we talked about, on, off of Overlook was emergency only, will be gated with a Knox box. I think you probably are familiar with maybe the type of users for these self-storage facilities. This is gonna be a state-of-the-art, brand-new self-storage facility. Mr. Charles has a brand-new site in Seminole Heights. Seminole Heights Self-Storage, that is a lovely addition to that neighborhood. And so typically, your, your tenants have collectibles, furniture. There are often apartment renters that may not have room for their furnishings in their small apartment. Box storage, like papers, you know, that type of thing. Hazardous waste, that type of thing is strictly prohibited in the tenant leases. And there's also a very advanced, state-of-the-art security system with camera monitors and that are, you know, in the loading areas. And so you don't, this isn't the type of facility where you pull up to your own roll-up door, roll up the, like a garage and put your own, you know, stuff in there. So it, it doesn't lend itself for someone to, you know, store chemicals or tires or, you know, that type of thing. The, as Mr. Anisi indicated, the phase three is the retail restaurant portion. We do not have an end user for that. This, this site plan is conceptual and I believe we will have to come back before you with a final proposal when that portion of the, of the project is developed. But I assure you that anyone that will invest in the development of that out parcel is hoping to be a good neighbor to Temple Terrace and certainly garner the business of, of the community. Hours of operation have been set at seven AM to ten PM, which coincides with your own noise ordinance within your code. And just another comment about traffic. Self-storage uses are, are one of the lowest traffic generators out there. I think I estimated in our, in our backup that the facility of this size would generate at peak hour about twenty trip ends. So that's about ten cars within a peak hour. So that's a very low traffic generator compared to many other uses out there and could be permissible on this property.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing will now close. Council discussion. Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask just one question of the applicant's representative or the owner, Mr. Charles, are you, are you in agreement with the conditions that are placed on this PD?
Yes, we are. We worked those out with staff and we agreed to those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Council members, any comments, discussion? Councilman Schiller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And certainly, I appreciate everybody coming this evening and expressing their concerns. I think there is validity to what Mr. Myers and Ms. Atkins had to, to say. But I will tell you, I think this use is much more attractive than the bowling alley. If you recall, there was big riots at the bowling alley. They raided, looted the, the, the stores on the corner. I mean, I, I would welcome this any day over what's there right now. And, and we all, you know, and, and we all live here, too. So we want what's good for our city. I was just out of luncheon today and Mr. Friedman, who used to live in Temple Terrace, Friedman Furniture, and he's building a large storage unit right off of two seventy-five and very attractive. These are not, I think this project is not what we used to traditionally think of as storage units, little one-story building with garage doors. These are climate-controlled. You normally have a dolly to walk in the door. It's not where the commercialized one that some people even use as workshops. I, I, I don't think that that's the perception that's, that's taking place here. It seems like it's gonna be a substantial investment. These units are climate-controlled. I'm sure they're gonna have their annual fire inspections and they do a very fine job. If there's chemicals being stored in there or there's something going on or it's inappropriate, I assure you, the fire department's gonna put a stop to it immediately because these guys do their job. And as stated earlier, there's cameras in there. I mean, this is a substantial investment that these folks are bringing forward and just, I, I just wanna reiterate, you know, I'm comfortable with this type of use compared to what's there right now. And you guys have lived there for some time as well. We, and I saw the police chief nodding his head a little while ago. There's always problem after problem at the bowling alley. When you have these young kids, they go out there, they drink, they start getting excited and all kinds of problems happen. That's not what we want to happen in Temple Terrace. So I, I, I think this is something that, that is attractive and I look forward to working and welcoming this, this use of our city. I just wanna ask one, one thing and I appreciate, number one, the applicant being accommodating to the neighbor last week about the wall. But I wanna make sure that if that use of that house changes, that wall no longer, you know, is no obligated to keep it there because it's not fair to, to the applicant. The other gentleman had a valid concern and although the applicant could've said, no, I'm taking it down, he was very accommodating. So I wanna make sure that, that somewhere written in there that if somebody else takes over that house, you know, and the use is changing, then there's no obligation to maintain that, that wall in place.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schiller. Councilman.
My question is, thank you to the neighbors for addressing that because I think what you let us do was to assure you that this was a different type of storage unit than you feared. And you're absolutely right. I wouldn't, I would not hesitate to say no if it was the old style or anything and anybody could drive up at any time and, and pull in. But my question really is about the traffic concern that you've brought to mind. Mr. Stevenson, have, is there any way for us to have a conversation with DOT? That corner has been a problem from day one when they changed the, they put in the median, the new median. I know when the previous, well, the current owner of the bowling alley was very concerned with those of us who live in Temple Terrace were going to the bowling alley. We had to make a very dangerous U-turn, which we've all done. But the way the hill crests there, you really take your, you have to really go for it when you make that turn because you really can't see traffic coming to the east. So is there any way we can have a conversation, either change the median or do something? Because they're absolutely right. I have visited Gail and her beautiful home and you have to go the other way. You, you know, if you, if you wanna go, if you wanna go west, don't go that way. So, sorry.
Yeah, there is no doubt that that's a dangerous intersection. We have had that conversation with DOT. It is one of those conversations we continue to have to try to sell DOT and putting in a new signalization on an intersection is near impossible, but we don't give up. We continue to talk to them about it. Mr. Lupton has personally been lobbying me for years.
Yeah.
In, in my previous capacity to try to do something. So we will continue to do that. We will continue to, to work with DOT to try to get something done.
Thank you. Hope that helps.
Are there any other comments from council? If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning three point six seven acres of property located on the south side of East Bush Boulevard and the east side of Overlook Drive and approximately a hundred and forty-five feet south of East Bush Boulevard and the east, and east of Overlook Drive with addressable locations of eight seven three five and eight seven three nine Overlook Drive and five three zero nine, five three one one and five three one three East Bush Boulevard from zoning classification CG Commercial General, Temple Terrace and R-ten Single Family Residential, Temple Terrace to PD Plan Development with the conceptual plan for RZP seventeen fifteen, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
I would entertain a motion to adopt the rezoning RZP number seventeen dash fifteen for Paradigm Sports Group Corporation, excuse me.
Move to approve ordinance one four four six to adopt RZP number seventeen dash fifteen.
We have a motion, is there?
Second.
We have a motion. In the second, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, new business? Is there new business to come before the council?
Do we, council business first? It's on the bottom. Probably that's what you got.
Well, well, no, council business. I didn't think we had any existing standover council business, so any business would be new business, correct? I don't think we had any outstanding council business.
So is there new business to come before council?
I have an item for new business. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Boss.
Okay, I, I try to handle a lot of things between council and the city manager through different venues. I believe I sent Charles an email on Monday requesting some information regarding issues that we're dealing with, the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club and newly appointed members to the Strategic Advisory Committee. I think Charles said he was gonna share with the other council members and hopefully that he did. I would like to say this was the first request that I asked of Charles to provide information to me, but unfortunately it was not. And my, my concern was that these members who were newly appointed sat on a, a committee or as citizen volunteers via appointment by the city manager and the council member to go ahead and negotiate and look into different items regarding the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, should the club not pay the funds that were necessary to bring us out, the club out of the forbearance. And that they might have information that was pertinent to council during these discussions that now council, except for Councilman Pagorlich, have no knowledge of. Only these members do and I felt that was inappropriate that members that are council-appointed should have more information and knowledge about what was going on behind the scenes than council members did. And it was requesting again that this information be provided to council. And to be honest, it started the day after the council meeting on January seventeenth when I emailed Charles and asked him, and this comes to communications. It was mentioned at the meeting last night, the workshop by Councilmember Pagorlich, that the city imposed a nuclear option. We had a plan in place to open the doors and run as normal in the morning. This is the first time I had heard of any contingency plans. I asked him to provide counsel with this information as well as any names of the people or groups that are providing the contingency backup option. I think everyone was surprised to know that we would've had somebody in place ten to twelve hours later. The answer I got back was, this was discussed in council, who directed us to come up with the Plan B, which I agree with. Said for confidentiality reasons, I am unable to share this with council until we exercise this option. I can assure you that we have not agreed to any conditions or agreements, so I'll make sure that council certainly knows what we were doing. My concern and issues with this, I did send also to city manager Stevenson regarding, I knew who we appointed to the committee. He also shared this email regarding council business to members of the public who were not on council. And I knew we appointed the city manager and we appointed David Pagorlich and city staff to go ahead and do this and other people were added to the committee. My other question to him was about providing information to council as well as inclusion of non-members on council on my email. I requested that he provide the information as soon as possible on any and all persons or groups involved in the Plan B scenario or provide me with any section of council rules, city charter, or fuller state statutes that would allow him to withhold this information to council. Since the committee already been discussing with person to persons regarding Plan B, I do not believe this request should take long. This was January nineteenth. I hadn't gotten any information back yet. I asked him for other requests, too, regarding some of the information about dates, times, the date of last payments from Integrity, the dates and amounts that Integrity has to pay to the city, because we had a lot of confusion in earlier meetings about issues and what was paid, what wasn't paid. Also, any notes to defaults that were sent to Integrity Golf with the Board of Directors for failure to make payment during two thousand seventeen? And a lot of other questions that were eventually answered on the twenty-fifth. I was advised to make up the committee was decided on by the appointment of Councilmember Pagorlich and Councilmember Stevenson by council and they engaged Mrs. Schlesler, Mrs. Stats, was a decision of the appointees.
Is there a motion or?
No, there's not a motion. This is new business and I, I would like to get to the answer to the questions that I've asked of, of the city manager. I've also questioned the city manager because on January fifth at two thousand eighteen at one twenty-nine, Councilmember Pagorlich sends Charles, Pam, Gil, and Don an email where he discusses a meeting time and states, also be sure to send the cure letter and confidentiality agreements go out no later than today. Thanks. Charles has said to me, there's no confidentiality agreements. There's an email here that says they wanted to send them out. My understanding is there's a discussion with the city attorney in which said confidentiality agreements can't be entered into by cities, which is quite appropriate. But yet we're talking to somebody. City council doesn't know who we're talking to, doesn't know anything about it and the information's not being provided to us. I'd asked, tried for five, six weeks to get this information provided to council so it didn't have to be done in a public venue. So I'm just asking for that information to be provided to council.
Is there any other new business?
Do you want, do you want him to make a motion? I'm not sure. Well, well, this is, this is a council body, so there is no one person who directs any one of our three employees. If there is not a motion and there is not a vote by this body to do so, my question and challenges, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly what is being raised. Councilman Boss was on the losing side of a vote to appoint those that were appointed to representatives of the country club. So it's not appropriate for him to bring up a motion to reconsider that. Per parliamentary procedures, which is what our body focuses on, there was a lot of discussion there and that's why I was looking for a motion on what specific action you are asking the city manager to take. And yes, it would need to be a vote of this body when we are asking our employees to take substantial time. We are a council that works as one body.
Okay. First of all, I wasn't asking for a recall of the election. People, although, although we had two ballots in front of us, everyone can draw any of their own conclusions that they want about how the election transpired. People were appointed by council as a body and they represent the city. Again, the information I'm asking for, and this is the motion, that please provide counsel with the information. Well, if we, we had a Plan B in place that was designed and set up by the group of people regarding the forbearance agreement, the club. The motion would be to please provide counsel with this information as well as any and all the names of people or groups that are providing this contingency backup option. That is my motion.
I'll second that motion.
There is a motion, there's a second. Is there any further discussion among council?
If I may.
Councilman Ross first and then we'll go to Councilman Pagorlich.
Well, actually, this may be helpful if I go first, David.
Okay.
I'm aware of some of these questions only because I've been copied like the rest of us.
of us on the replies. I, I would, I don't have a lot of skin in this game to the same extent. I'm a social member of the club, but I, I don't, I guess the, the thing that I would like to hear from Mr. Stevenson, or it may be that Mr. Pogorilich is about to answer this anyway, or from our attorney or from somebody, is it concerns me not so much about the club per se. That, I, I, I'm not bothered so much by that, but I'm, I'm a little bothered by anything that's secret in, 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 in our form of government. So, i- if there is, now, I don't know that there is. I don't know what the explanation here is, and I, I, I don't know, quite honestly, what to think of this whole thing, but I would like to hear from somebody about there is no secret, there is no, I don't know what to, but I would like to hear something along those lines from somebody.
Councilman Pogorilich.
Yes, let me address that. You know, while Mr. Boss and all the other golf members and social members were down at the club enjoying all the perks and benefits that they get as being members of those clubs, this committee, including Mr. Schlesler and Mr. Stats, were working long and hard, including weekends, to ensure that they would continue to enjoy those perks and benefits no matter what happened. We spoke to, I don't know, a dozen, maybe two dozen different people, okay? We spoke to people that, that had a willingness to come in and help us out should that be necessary. We have no contracts with anybody. We were, we talked about confidentiality agreements. We were told we can't have those. There is nothing to hand over. And as long as the club performs as they said they will perform, this quote, "nuclear option," which was not my title, somebody else gave it that title, will never happen. There is no need to hear from who we talked to or who, what, who told us they might come in and help us. It was all discussions. We are under no obligation to tell you about every discussion we had. We were doing our job. Rather than ostracize us, you should be thanking us. You should be clapping that we did our due diligence to ensure that everybody down at the club would continue to enjoy those perks and benefits that they continue to enjoy today. We were trying to move this forward, and we were trying to ensure that everybody continued to be able to enjoy the club. As long as the payments are made, as long as they do what they say they're supposed to do, as long as they follow the lease, there will never be another discussion about anybody taking over anything. And should that day occur that they are again in default, we have to go out now and talk to everybody all over again, so whoever said they might help us before may no, may no longer be interested. It's a moot point. And I, I can't even tell you all the people we talked to because we talked to so many. There are no written agreements. There are no written confidentiality agreements. There are no contracts. There was talk. And quite frankly, to bring this up now is, is, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous, okay? The time to bring it up was way back when, and I, you said you, you weren't talking about the appointments, but that yet you went on for 20 minutes saying how they shouldn't have been appointed because they were a member of this committee.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm, I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
So, my suggestion is, rather than beat the dead horse, that as a council member, you should be more concerned about the club moving forward and being successful as well as the number of items that we're supposed to be getting from them, some of which we still haven't got, like when is the SAC meeting? I've heard the third Thursday in March. I've heard the fourth Thursday in March. I've heard it's before the directors' meeting. I've heard it's after the directors' meeting. When is the directors' meeting? Well, we haven't decided yet. So, rather than, again, beat a dead horse and go down a road that nobody needs to go down because it's, it's, it's a moot point, we're not doing it, and if we have to do it, we're going to have to start all over again, we should be more concerned about moving forward, making sure the club is successful, and that's what those two people on the SAC committee are going to be doing. It concerns me more that now that we have a deal, that we heard nothing from the club, that the information that we're, what, is there any information that we're supposed to have gotten by now that we haven't got?
Yeah, there's a number of requirements under the Second Amendment to the lease that I don't know that they're being strictly complied with. I mean, and, and as you mentioned, the Strategic Action Committee, that's supposed to, that should have been created back.
Back, sorry. That should have been created back in 2015 as a permanent committee, and it's required to meet no less than quarterly, so they should be having a meeting this month before the quarter runs out.
As far as I know, we have one of the members here. Have you, have you heard when exactly this meeting is going to occur?
No, sir.
What about financials? Are there any financials that we're supposed to do that we haven't got yet?
I, I believe that the payments have all been made, so.
Yeah.
That's not an issue.
Isn't there ongoing financial documents that we're supposed to be getting?
I think they're quarterly.
Yes, quarterly, yes.
But again, I, to, to continue to go down this road, I'm not so sure why you're so dead set on finding out names that are, are immaterial at the moment, and if, when we go, if we, if we're faced with this again, will not be the same names because we're going to be, talking discussions all over again. I, I suggest you put it to bed, and we move forward. We're trying to make the club a success, which is what we were all trying to do to begin with. And it's quite frankly insulting that you would ostracize the, the committee's work when all they were doing is trying to help you and all your other club members.
Thank you.
I'm now done, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there other council members who'd like to speak to this? Councilman Donahue.
I really don't understand why there's such angst and anger over Mr. Boss asking that this council be apprised of something that was clearly stated at the meeting that if we took the keys, we could open tomorrow morning, which really speaks, now, maybe you just misspoke, but it really does speak to that there is a plan in place, and it would have been a plan that if we had been notified more often of what was happening, I mean, we really were completely, there weren't any reports given to us along the way. Basically, I think that's, I, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Boss, I'll just speak for myself, when I had other people tell me things that the committee were making decisions on, including the addition of two new members. Now, those two new members, if they brought something to the table, that's great, but when we appointed the members of the committee, we were not asked if we wanted to appoint citizens to the committee. So, it, you know, I mean, that came as a surprise as well. So, you know, if we're going to appoint a committee, and then we find out the committee is larger than it is, at least perhaps that, that should have been brought to us. And, and this is all in hindsight, but I, I don't think I've heard, I don't think I heard Mr. Boss tell you that you had not done a good job. Obviously, the two groups had to come together and come to an agreement. I think what I'm hearing is that, the same thing Mr. Ross is hearing, is that I hate to find out later that there are either citizens or children of members of the committee who know more about what the discussions have been than we do. And, you know, that's, that's, that's the thread of this. And, and I read, just like you, Mr. Boss's comments, and he didn't wait until tonight to ask this question. He started asking this question in the early part of January, so.
And he was given the same answer over and over again, that there is nothing to give him.
Well, I think.
Thank you. Please do not crosstalk one to another.
I, I wasn't planning on it. I was not finished. I guess what I'm getting at, and what I believe Mr. Boss is getting at, is that the answer didn't seem to fit with the reality. So, to be told there's no conversation, and then to be hearing it from the public, I don't know how that got out there, but, and I don't know where they got the information, but it made, it made me feel the same way. And then, when he started writing the emails, I said, well, I'll let him take care of it, and, which he did. So, that's why I seconded the motion, because I think the message that we're trying to send is that we need to be kept completely aware, and if it means that we have private meetings with the city manager, which is generally the way for us to get those communications, then we need to agree that, that we need more of those. And if we have other conversations, especially as the country club continues to work to build the club back up, then as the committee meets, perhaps there needs to be a vehicle for us to be apprised of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schlesler, did you want to address this item?
My only comment is, I've seen the Circus Act going back and forth. If, certainly, there's been public records requests, nothing's come up. I specifically asked Mr. Stevenson, what's his nuclear option? He goes, I don't know. So, if a council member says the sky's falling down, is the sky really falling down? It is Mr. Stevenson's duty to provide this council with information that is there. Obviously, a public records request was made, which is beyond his control. It's, it's on your email. It's coming out, as Mr. Bob just showed, Mr. Pogorilich saying, give me this confidentiality agreement. And then, once they asked a question, and Mr. Pogorilich elaborated on it, said, the city attorney said, you can't do that, it's illegal, or it's not appropriate. Okay, answer my question, there's no confidentiality agreement. I think it's just a matter of questioning. Mr. Stevenson said, I don't have it, there's not any. I specifically asked him, what's his nuclear option? And this committee was not a binding committee. They couldn't make any decisions. They had to come to us. This committee couldn't have said tomorrow morning, we're locking the doors and taking the keys. Can't do that. This council has to authorize that. So, as I sit here and listen to this, I said, this is ridiculous, it's stupid, we're wasting very valuable time, we should be looking at much other important things than this Circus Act. The country club issue is resolved, they've paid their money, let's move forward, it's water over the dam as Mr. Whittmore stated. So, let's get back to business, let's hope the country club continues on the right track, everybody's happy. So, please, for the sake of this council, the sake of the city, let's just get back to business and stay focused. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion, we have a sec.
I have answers to Mr. Pogorilich's concerns.
Councilman Boss.
Thank you. Again, I, I didn't wait till the last minute to bring this up. I brought it up immediately after because people asked me, what is this nuclear option? Should we have voted to go ahead and say, no, we're not giving you two more weeks? I had no answer for them. People asked me, what is this email saying, send out the cure letter and confidentiality things that I read before? Send out the confidentiality agreements, go out no later than today. Thanks. What does this mean? I don't know. Some people on the committee may know. I didn't say anything about the people on the committee. I said, the people on the committee have more information than the people on council, and I just wanted to have the information on council. We throw around the word transparency up here, and infant item. I was looking for transparency. I was looking for answers to questions immediately after the council meeting, and I got a response back telling me, for confidentiality reasons, I am unable to share this with council until we exercise this option. I then asked, under what guise of Florida state statutes, anything else prohibits you from providing information to council for confidentiality reasons? And then, all I got back was email after email after email saying, why am I not providing the information to council? That's why I brought up this motion, and that's why I brought this up. I tried to do it without bringing it up here for five to six weeks to no end. So, I'm ready for the question to be called if you would like to call the question.
Thank you, Councilman Boss. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just repeat the motion after our discussion.
The motion, if our city clerk would please read the motion.
All I have is if there was a Plan B in place, please provide counsel with that information.
That's correct. It was motion to please provide counsel with the information regarding the Plan B, should we have imposed a nuclear option, any names of people or groups that are providing this contingency plan backup option.
There was a motion, there was a second. Calling the vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion does not pass. We do have one other item of new business. We received a thank you note. God shows His love through the warmth and kindness of special people like you. Thank you, and God bless. Thank you all for your prayers and kind words upon hearing of the passing of my brother Scott. We find much comfort and even joy in knowing that he has graduated to heaven and that we have the prayers and support of so many friends like you. A true blessing with sincere gratitude, Sandy and Charles. And this was from Mrs. Stevenson on the passing of her brother, the note that council, card that council shared with her. If there's no other new business to go before council, we go to the city manager's report, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the kind words. Just a couple of things here. I will be gone, out of town next week from Sunday through Thursday. I may or may not be in on Friday. I've got to go out of town and take care of some business, some personal business. In my absence, I have recommended that Carl Angfeld conduct himself as acting city manager. He has agreed to that and is expected to be here in town. So, with that, I'm not, I'm not unable to get hold of, if you guys need to get hold of me, best way to get me is through a phone call. That's the best way to contact me. The other item that we need to, somewhere in, in the near future address, I know my assistant, Jeannie Bartlow, has been trying to get a, a date together for a goal-setting It is that time of year again. It comes around fairly quickly. April, we were trying to do this in April. It seems like every week in April is kind of taking, everyone's got something going on every single week. May is about the, the next month, and we'd like to do it just as soon as we possibly can. So, if I can kind of get everybody to look at their calendar, maybe the first week in May, see what everybody's got going on, I'd like to get that scheduled as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there any other business to come before the council?
I just, I just want to let you know, there's a public outreach that will be occurring this Thursday morning here on, at the Park and Ride, right here at City Hall, between 6:30 and 8:30 in the morning to discuss possible changes to service out here in Temple Terrace, and also will occur again between 4:30 and 6:30. That's if you want to meet at the City Hall. Otherwise, I will be riding the bus in, in the afternoon, not, I can't do it in the morning because some, sometimes you, sometimes you can't, you know, you, that's the only way to get to the people who actually ride the bus is to get on the bus, so.
What date is that?
Thursday, March 8th.
Madam Mayor, I, regarding Heartline stuff, I was going to bring this up, but regarding the Heartline, I know I brought it up when they were here the last time, but that new bus stop for, for Route 6, that stops on the northbound lanes of 56th Street, just north of Fowler Avenue, right near the McDonald's there. That is dangerous.
Okay.
And, and just the other day, I was turning from eastbound Fowler on the northbound 56, which I do about three times a day, and I'm in the left lane, the bus is stopped in the right lane just after you make the turn, and all the people who are getting off the bus are, are running right behind the bus across traffic. There must have been eight people that, and then, of course, everybody's slamming on the brakes, and the cars are stacking up back into the intersection, everybody's screeching to, that thing's going to, somebody's going to get killed at that bus stop if they don't do something.
I'll send a message.
That's about the third time I've brought it up, and it, that, that's the Wild West up there, let's.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Did, did you need to know dates if we were available in the first week?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to do it now, we can do it now, that'd be great. Otherwise, I can have Jeannie kind of reach out to you.
The earliest I'm available is the week of the 23rd.
Of May?
No, April.
Well, yeah.
Go to May, okay.
Yeah, April's kind of out of question because I've got just about everything individually, all of you have got something going on in April, so.
Well, I, I'm available the first week of May, so.
I am too.
I'm not. I'm sorry.
I'm available second week of May.
I am too.
I'm available the second week of May, except for Thursday and Friday.
I don't have a calendar.
Seventh, eighth, or ninth.
I have to, I have to, I have to get with my office on my calendar.
You're taking weeks, not going to work for you?
No, I have to get with my calendar and my office.
She has to get to her calendar at her office.
I, I'll, I'll just have to send you my calendar, I'm sorry. I turned my phone off and that doesn't work to my advantage.
We've kind of got some, some yeses and some don't knows. Let me have Jeannie reach out to everybody again.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do that this week, before this, before this week's over. One other thing, just to make mention, we've got Senior Expo this Friday. We've got Ride with the Mayor and first thing in the morning, Senior Expo, 9:00 to noon, 9:00 to noon. And then, there's something else. And then there's something else going on later in the afternoon, I can't even remember what it is, but those are the two most important things.
Seven thirty for the Ride With the Mayor.
I heard you had a new bicycle.
I'm bringing coffee and donuts.
Coffee and donuts.
I'm not, Rotary Club of Temple Terraces.
I heard you got a new, you got a new bicycle?
I do. And if there's no further business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned.